Okay, I see it's past four already, so I'm going to call the May 17th, 2021 Select Board Meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We are being videoconferenced and recorded, and so I'm ready for the clerk to call the who is present.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye, present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Hodgkiss.
Present.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
And myself, Ms. Bates, present.
Okay, and all the Select Board members are here. Thank you very much. All right, the consent agenda reads as follows: Town Accountant Warrants for May 13th, 2021. This is National Public Works Week Proclamation for May 16th to May 22nd, 2021, and with thanks to all of our public works members. And one-day liquor, special liquor licenses, Verro Farm, actually all five of them for Verro Farm, the first one for May 17th, 2021, 5:30 to 7:30 wine and malt beverages only. The June 16th, 2021, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, wine and malt beverages only. On June 12th, 2021, 12:00 to 4:00 PM, wine and malt beverages only. June 24th, 2021, 5:00 to 9:00 PM, wines and malt beverages only. And August 7th, 2021, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, wine and malt beverages only.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Number two?
Second.
Okay, well, the clerk, please.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hodgkiss.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. So we'll begin with the Town Manager's Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I do want to comment quickly. The National Public Works Week proclamation was a part of the consent agenda, and I just want to note how personally grateful I am for the services that they provide. I know it's on the consent agenda because I know it enjoys broad support, and I know the board shares my feelings about the work of our public works employees, but I just wanted to just make a note of that for those here in the meeting with us. So, a quick update, we did, we are working on the vaccines, we are working on a clinic that will be this week at CCHS, the first, it'll be, is a two-round, I think it's Pfizer, but it's two rounds. So, the goal is to get both rounds of vaccines before the end of the school year, because the focus is on middle and high schoolers and families. And we are working with a pharmacy, a pharmacy Pelmed, who is providing us with the vaccine doses. We did talk to the Mass Department of Public Health about this clinic they were doing, and they were supportive of it. They still haven't made a decision on our regional vaccination clinic, and so they said we were free to pursue this without worry of disrupting that effort. So, I think, I'm not going to speak for Dr. Hunter, but I think there'll be, the more students we can get vaccinated, I think the more comfort we'll have as we proceed through the end of the school year and families go into summer vacation, especially given the governor's announcement today that isn't reflected in my town manager's report, but obviously would have been a bit of a game changer had he made it on Friday instead of Monday. So, if you hadn't heard, he has announced that the mask mandate will be ending on May 29th, and that the emergency orders will be rescinded on June 15th. Now, that's obviously not in time to impact our town meeting, other than the mask components, but he will be lifting the occupancy restrictions on businesses and most other things. In the guidance that I saw, he did say that there would be, they would be working on providing additional guidance to basically smooth out the transition back into, you know, smooth out the transition back to either old ways of doing things or making modifications to, you know, how things operate in light of some of the changes we've made. So, obviously, we've talked here a lot about some kind of open meeting model that allows for remote participation, so hopefully that's going to be a part of his effort. So, more to come on that. The other thing I'll say is, we talked last week, the library is getting ready to open this week. They will be opening under the existing mask requirements, and so for community members who want to go there, a mask will be, still be required for entry and to be indoors in the library, because the order does not go into effect until May 29th. And I will also note that the guidance I saw today said that those who have not been vaccinated will still be required to wear a mask and maintain social distance. So, there's still some sorting out to do, you know, the pandemic isn't quite over yet, and just for the next couple of weeks, we will be still operating under the existing guidance, which does require masks. So, I just want to make sure we manage expectations there. I have a brief note in here about the internet outage. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jane.
I just wanted to ask whether testing is also still going on as vigorously as before, given that our ability to relax is based on vaccinations, but there are certain portions of the population, namely the younger ones, who haven't been, for the most part. And I just want to make sure we're continuing to, not just through the schools, but to capture those folks, since, you know, this is all, we're still learning anyway.
Yeah, and I think there's still a lot to figure out. Oh, I mean, it's, I'm glad that at least it's two weeks' notice, or two weeks-plus notice, because we've been receiving announcements on Friday that go into effect on Monday, and something like that would be really difficult to accommodate. So, we have a little bit of time to sort out. What does it mean when, you know, there's a distinction between people who have been vaccinated, have not been vaccinated with regards to mask wearing, how do you determine that? Or what can we do to, you know, ask for some kind of, you know, documentation, or some kind of, you know, some kind of verification, if you will, that they have in fact been vaccinated? Like, these are all questions that we have, but have not, but are, as of now, unanswered. So, excuse me. So, going on, moving on to the, we had an internet outage last, late last week with our town broadband service, and as best I can describe it, is a sequence of perfect storm-type things that was triggered by, we have three internet service providers, so we have some redundancy. We also have redundancy for, you know, backup link, if you will. And one of the ISPs had an outage, and that triggered a series of, I think, both hardware and software issues that took a while to unwind, but we were back up. It was a few hours, I think it was from about noon time till about, you know, 4:30 or 5 o'clock, we were back online. Another planning board was able to hold their public hearing. So, we, you know, CMLP and Concord Broadband, we apologize for the disruption of service. Like I said, there was a few things that happened outside of our network that kind of triggered all this, and it was pretty complicated to kind of get to the bottom of it and get things reset, but we were able to restore service. And, you know, have lessons learned about how some of the things have been, how some of the network was originally set up, and some of the changes that may be needed that we learned about through this process. So, then the other thing is, just to give you a quick update, one of the goals we had set for our organization was to engage in a process for the organization that's focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, and we have retained the services of EWH Consultants, a gentleman named Ed Hurley Wales, who is a Concord resident, as a subject matter expert, really, to help do an assessment of the departments in our organization, to kind of begin, build a roadmap for how we can improve our efforts on the DEI front. And I think that that effort will lead to a broader discussion in terms of not only how do we operate, you know, what is the, what is the philosophy of the town's organization, or I shouldn't say philosophy, but what is our current assessment of our, you know, how do we score on DEI efforts now, and then what can our roadmap be going forward, and then how can that enable us to, you know, extend that out into the community? And so, the report lays out some of the steps that we'll be engaged in with Mr. Hurley Wales, and I am personally, I was involved in DEI issues 30 years ago as a freshman in college, and I know from that experience that it is, it is absolutely a journey, not a destination. And so, we are treating this very much like the first step of a, what we think will be a journey for not only the town departments, but for the community, to really take a hard look at who we are today, and, you know, who do we want to be, to be more diverse, equitable, and inclusive. So, I'm looking forward to that. And I had my interview with Ed on Friday, and he asked great questions, and I think we're going to learn a whole lot about ourselves, and so I'm looking forward to that assessment. Sorry, Jane?
I was just going to say, while I will not be on the Select Board at the time, I hope that you share some of the lessons learned freely with both the Select Board and also Concord Committees, because I think Concord as a whole, we could all benefit from this training. I know, I would appreciate it. I'll have to, I'll have to pick your brain separately.
Yeah, and that would have been my comment as well, that not to just limit it to the senior management team, but to just look town-wide, you know, what can we do? I think we do all have work to do.
Yeah, I agree with that, and that's something that we talked about early on, as we kind of decided to establish our process, and I think it was Ed's suggestion that the first thing you have to do is an organizational assessment. Like I said, I think we have community goals for DEI, but as I said, you know, as the big T-town, the municipal corporation, we have our own goals, and this was one of the two that we set aside, or not set aside, that we specified we wanted to pursue. And really, the assessment was something that he said, you have to do an assessment first, that's the first point. And, you know, I think this is a journey, and every journey starts with that first step, and we do look at this as a first step, but this is a community, this is a journey of not only the organization, but the whole community. So, the short answer is, yes, we do plan to make this an open process and share our lessons learned and figure out ways where we can both show leadership to the community and also be led by the community.
Because some of our peer communities have a standing DEI committee, so, you know, it becomes an integral part of the town governance process, you know, not just the staff, but the whole government.
Yep. Since we're taking questions as we go along, and thank you for doing that, Town Manager, can I just follow up with another question there? You mentioned that you've already been interviewed. Can you give us just some sense of how the next steps are happening, or what kind of timeline?
So, I think he's completing his interviews with SMT members, and then I think he'll do a report based on those. I think that would be in the coming weeks. I don't, to be honest, off the top of my head, I don't know the timeline.
The additional interviews you're hoping are going to happen within the near space, I guess, is what I'm...
Yeah, I would think in a couple of weeks, we'll have certainly an initial, some initial feedback on our assessment from Ed and his team, for sure.
Thank you, I'm just getting some idea there. Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry.
Go ahead.
All right, so just moving forward, we are working on, I use the word reopening of town departments, but I think reopening is a bit of a misnomer, I'm just not sure what the word is, because most town departments, some town departments have been, you know, by appointment, serving the public. Others have been technically not open to the public, most notably, a lot of it, some of the offices at Townhouse, but that has more to do with the renovations than anything else. And so, but throughout the pandemic, town employees have been working full-time, and in many cases, more than full-time, to continue to provide services. And so, when I look at, when I, when we talk about reopening, it's, I don't want, I don't want to convey the impression that we've been, that we haven't been operating, but as the board knows, we've been operating full speed throughout the pandemic. This is more, you know, re-acclimating to direct public interaction, and how does that look, and are there, are there structures that were established during the pandemic that we think as a transition period could be beneficial? And so, I just have, we haven't finalized things now, but we're closing in on what we think would be a modified work schedule for hours of operation, for, not hours of operation, for hours, we're open basically to walk-ins. Appointments can be, really be made by the public at any time, but certainly as we're in this transition period, have a modified schedule for walk-ins. I do think that the community's expectation of service, or their, the community's view of the service model has shifted, I think, during the pandemic, just like our service model that we provide has shifted. And so, we're, like everything, as we come out of the pandemic, we're looking to try and integrate things that worked well and get back to the prior way of doing things that worked better than the way they've done in the pandemic. But like I said, the big thing is building schedules, flexible schedules, will remote work continue to be an option for some employees? Can we have some flexibility in the schedules? Part of the goal here is, before the pandemic, you know, we had, it was a pretty highly, it was a highly structured work environment, and I think what we've seen is more flexible work environments are more attractive to potential employees and to be competitive. There's almost an expectation of a flexible workplace, and so now that we've been kind of forced into being a flexible workplace by the pandemic, we want to make sure we maintain that to be an attractive employer as well. So, these are the, these are kind of the overarching discussion points that we're having, but again, I think in the next few weeks, we will have something nailed down to present for the board.
Good. Questions, Terry?
Thank you for putting this on the Town Manager Report. I think this is a topic that is very much on everyone's mind, and I appreciate you trying to attract a very flexible, I mean, the best employees that we can with the flexible work. And I think you're right, that community expectations have shifted, but the only thing, I'm not really sure, and I don't know if anybody knows exactly how they've shifted. So, I guess, I'd suggest not only talking to the employees about what's going to work best for them, but maybe to put this on the agenda and talk with the Select Board before you nail it down finally. I feel like we need some input from the public to see how expectations have shifted, because I'm not really clear. I know one of them only, which is something that I think you agree with, Stephen, that I think a lot of people agree with. Well, actually, two of them. One is, we're going to talk with Carmen, a lot of people love, you know, having a one-day town meeting. And the other one is, we've had a lot of requests for a hybrid system of meetings with Zoom and in-person. But what we haven't talked about is the customer service walk-in schedule and all of that, and I just think it will be important to get some community and board input, if possible.
Well, I mean, the primary consideration is operational considerations, Terry, and I think that that's what we're looking at now. I think, like I said, when we get to something that we think we can move forward, and let me also say that whatever we do in the short term is going to be a pilot project anyway, because we've never been through any of this. And so, I think we're going to try and, you know, our departments know their customers very, very well already. And so, I think that customer knowledge, you know, gives us the confidence that we have a general sense of what our customers will want and need, based on prior experience. But as we move forward with our trial, if you will, of our kind of new model, we certainly are going to, you know, need a lot of feedback from our customers about how's it going and what changes to that model need to be made. But, yeah, I definitely think we should, we should definitely talk about it, but we want to make sure that we move forward with a, you know, start from a structure and get feedback on that structure versus leaving it kind of open-ended, because I can tell you that it's complicated to try and put it all together, and if we left it open-ended, we would never get to, we'd never get there. We would never get to a place where we have a consensus model on how to move forward. So, but I do think community input on, you know, what things work and what don't work will be highly valuable. So, just moving forward quickly, the CPW is sending out, I think it sent out a notice today about outdoor water use. You know, we're not, we're not really on the list, so to speak, for drought warnings, you know, we had a wet April, and that's been very good, but those, as you all, you know, those conditions can change in a hurry, and the big thing is NAGOG, as you know, is still getting the intake project worked on, and that is our big summer surge source of water. And so, while that's offline, we really need to, we really need to be conservative with consumption. And so, they're sending out notifications or reminding people about one-day watering because of the lack of availability of NAGOG, and our hope is that people understand that NAGOG is offline, and they need to be somewhat restrictive in their watering in the short term, so we don't have to go to a full water ban. But that's something that I think a news and notices went out just a couple hours ago about that. And then, the work continues on the Culver and Monument Street. I just had a brief conversation with CPW Director Alan Cathcart, and it is going to be, I think, a very expensive repair. And so, we're going to meet internally to determine what are our options for funding that project in a time that, in the time that it needs to be completed. So, more to come in that as well. And then, last thing is, there is a hearing on Thursday for our home rule petition with regards to one-day liquor licenses, as I noted in my reports, when it was being considered last, earlier in, was it late last year or earlier this year, one of the, one of the changes that the state legislature's council suggested was identifying the specific addresses, otherwise it wouldn't be, it would be lawful. So, that's why they, in the version that got introduced, they plugged in the addresses of the four places that most frequently request one-day liquor licenses. So, those locations still have to apply and go through that whole process, but at least it makes them eligible for the one-day liquor license. So, if anybody has any thoughts they want to share in testimony that can be submitted, just let Linda and I know.
Okay.
So, this means that there's a more limited authority than we were hoping to get. We were hoping to have some latitude to make those assignments, right?
Yes, yeah, we were hoping to...
And so, now they're just saying, these four, you got those, but that doesn't give us, okay. But that may take down at least the administrative burden of these one-day licenses.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't recall the exact stat, but I think, and Jeremy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think those four addresses accounted for the vast majority of the requests. And so, and so, if one of the goals to accomplish was the administrative burden, both on the town and on those institutions, this, the way it's worded now will by and large accomplish that.
Yeah, okay.
And who will be attending the hearing from...
I think Linda or I, or both?
Yeah, great. Okay.
Any further questions?
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Moving on to the chair's remarks. First, included in our packets today is the material for the Moody's rating that was received, and we had also, some of us received a previous announcement about that. I just want to congratulate the Town Manager, the Chief Financial Officer and her entire department, the Deputy Town Manager, and all the SMT heads who have made this possible in terms of providing the operations within this good budget monitoring. So, congratulations to all. Before moving on to the update on the 9/11 Regional Dispatch Governance Agreement, I would like to ask the Select Board's indulgence in reordering the agenda items. I'd like to address first Agenda Item 8 and 9, then moving to 6, which would be the, with the help of our Town Moderator reviewing the consent agenda, and then finally to Article 7 Amendment Agenda Item. So, that would be 8, 9, 6, and 7 in that order, after we hear the update on the regional report. And that concludes my remarks. So, I see that we have Chief O'Connor, Chief Judge, Town Manager John Margiotti, who is Town Manager in Acton, and that's all I'm seeing at the moment to address this topic. Stephen, did you want to introduce it?
Sure. So, in the packet was a draft district agreement for the proposed Acton-Concord Regional Emergency Communication Center. And the draft district agreement is a governance agreement that basically establishes the governance model between the two communities and forms, and it would, it would establish an independent district to operate the Regional Emergency Communication System Center, which is typical for how many of these, some Regional Dispatch Centers are created under an intermunicipal agreement with a host community, others are created under a district agreement for an independent district. There's no right or wrong way to do it, but we believe that the district approach makes more sense for Acton and Concord. So, I won't go into great detail unless there's questions about the specifics of the agreement, but it basically sets forth, you know, the goals of the districts, you know, the terms, it sets forth how decisions are made, who would, you know, who would make operational decisions, who would make the overarching decisions about governance, and, you know, how communities could enter the district after it's established, and perhaps more importantly, how communities could withdraw from the district. And then, how decisions, like I said, decisions are made on everything ranging, like, sort of operational and financial matters. So, I include in the packet today, I think we, you know, happy to get feedback from the board, and I know the chiefs from Acton-Concord, as well as Manager Margiotti, are both, are all here to answer questions or share their views, and I will leave it at that, and open up to questions or comments.
So, I also want to acknowledge Chief Burrows, who has joined us. So, welcome to all the chiefs who are here today for this conversation. Right. So, it sounds like there's no structured presentation, and that you're just ready for the Select Board comments and questions.
Yeah, we were hoping to have really a dialogue with the board about, you know, thoughts on the district agreement and the concept generally, and the, tonight at 7, the Acton Select Board will also be, will be having a discussion with the Acton Select Board this evening as well.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
Hi, yes. Thank you for this document, Stephen, and to the, our Acton representatives. It's pretty comprehensive, but I do have some questions. And the first is Section 4 Governance about Board of Directors. What, it wasn't clear to me as I read through, what the composition of the Board of Directors is. I know it's the chief, or the two town managers would be on it, but is this a citizen and municipal board, or is it strictly municipal employee board?
It would be the two town managers, who would be the, or I see right now, it's the town managers, right now, that number's two, but it would be the town managers, who would be the Board of Directors.
Okay. I have, and then, so one of them is going, according to Section 8 on this, the board designates one of its members to approve payroll or bills for salary expenses or board members or employees. So, you're going to switch that back and forth between the two of you?
I mean, we haven't really discussed that in great detail, but we can switch it back and forth.
Just, if there's only two of you on the board, then obviously, according to this, one of you will be handling that at any given...
Yeah. Well, what's, sorry, if I can, Susan, just to explain that a little further. If you didn't do that, you would have to have a board meeting to sign warrants, and so what this does is allows one person to approve the warrants, but all that, all the work that goes into developing that stuff gets reviewed by the executive director, sometimes the operations committee. But Acton is the fiduciary agent, they are, you know, this completion of the district agreement is a requirement for the next round of development grant funding, and Acton is the applicant, and would be the grantee. But that's not to say we couldn't switch it back and forth, for sure.
Well, no, I wasn't suggesting that you do, I just didn't understand the composition of the board, so, and that was a kind of a follow-up to that. The operations committee also will be municipal employees. Can you give me an idea of, is it like the DPW directors and the, can you tell me about the composition of that group?
Sure, it's the service chiefs. So, it would be, how it's written in the agreement is the Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Emergency Management Director. In many communities, the Emergency Management Director is one of those positions at the same time, it's a dual, it's a dual role. Some places do have independent Emergency Management Directors. So, this, that part of the, that part of the language is somewhat, I don't say generic, but makes it flexible. So, if... So this, that part of the, that part of the language is is somewhat, um I don't say generic, but it makes it flexible. So if uh if at some point in time in the future, uh Chief Judge was not, you know, you know, Chief Chief Judge is the emergency management director, but if sometime in the future, um there's a new chief in Concord, uh and that chief is not the emergency management director, then Concord's emergency management director would serve on the operations committee. And and I I I I I hear you saying town employee committees. Um town employees oversee operations of the dispatch center today. So this really isn't a change in in how that works.
Yeah, okay. Um it does say all the board meetings are subject to O M L, the board and the operations committee. Um and then the question about the uh retirement, whether you, they can be involved in the retirement system. Um it's a, it's, I guess that's a to be determined thing for, through the middle six county?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um. All right, so how do you get a two thirds vote? Um if you're if another municipality wants to join, I guess it's a.
It's always unanimous.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, it has to be.
Yeah. Okay, um. Okay, I'll let somebody else have a turn and then I'll chime in if I have something that hasn't.
Matt, thank you.
Would you like to go next?
Sure. Um I mean, it's not directly related to this agreement, but I was just curious about the evolution of discussions with the dispatchers themselves. And just also the provision of services, you know, that are currently uh provided by them at our police station, you know, that might have to be transitioned. And you know, for example, I, I lose my wallet, you know, do I it it, how do you turn it in? Uh who do you pick it up from if you go into the station? Um that that's just a very basic consumer oriented thing, but there are many others cited. So I I'm just curious if that is going on in parallel to to this, or if if it's yet to be uh worked on.
So I I'll just give a brief answer about um the the development grants that we're we're applying for. Um really, many of those things get sorted out in this next phase. Uh but I I'll ask Chief Burrows and Chief O'Connor away on their views of how the, you know, I don't think we can say for absolute certainty, but we can talk about uh what they've seen in other places and and po- possible options that may work for our communities. And then uh I know uh John Manjirati has been, uh we've reached out to the unions, we've shared this this draft with them. Uh and I think we just haven't, we had a meeting scheduled that kind of fell apart at the last minute, um but we hope to continue the dialogue with the dispatchers uh and get their feedback on the agreement as well. But I'll.
Yeah, I mean, I guess most of the disagreement doesn't really touch on those specifics. Yeah, but okay.
Terry?
So I'm a longtime strong supporter of uh regional dispatch. Because I think Massachusetts is really behind the eight ball when you look at the rest of the country and like in California, they only have five dispatch centers for the entire state. So I feel like we're much provincial here and we could be much more efficient, especially with today's technology. Uh I do have some specific questions. I think it would be, this is a really good start, and the more towns that join, the more efficient it will be. Are there any other towns that you've heard from that may want to join in the future? You don't have to say which ones they are, but um you know, has, is this going to be just Acton Concord um for the indefinite future, or is it possible that some others may join?
So uh the agreement, as you can see, is structured, that it's structured in a way that contemplates additional communities. Um I, you know, I don't want to speak for John, but I will tell you that from where I stand, and I I think he agrees. Our only goal right now is to build the great, the the best regional dispatch center for Acton Concord. Um and if we achieve that, then I think we'd be in a position to entertain other communities to to join. And now based on experience, based on my direct experience with this, with regional dispatch centers, do I think that other communities will want to join?
Yeah.
I do. But our goal is to build the best regional dispatch center for our two towns first and foremost. Um and if other towns want to join after that, that's, that's, that's a discussion for them. But I think um I I, at least we wouldn't have to go back to the drawing board in terms of district agreement, which is why, like I said, many of the provisions are the way they are. Um and and like I said, that we would not be the first regional dispatch center to talk, to start off with a two person board of directors. That's not, that's not uncommon at all either.
Right. So.
I I, so I'm sorry, Terry, I was, go ahead.
Well, one of the reasons that I'm asking is um I guess um I'm wondering how many employees it will have um in total and in dispatchers. If if you add it up now, the total number of dispatchers in Acton and in Concord versus this new structure, will it have the same number of dispatch positions? Or more or less?
So it, when the report that we that we sent out um the last time, this was on an agenda, it has those, that that data. I don't have that report open. Um but I I I think there's um the same amount total. Uh the regional dispatch center does provide the opportunity for supervisory level positions that don't currently exist. And you know, I I think the thing I want to make clear to the board uh is this isn't outsourcing. Um you know, we currently have um dispatchers in both Concord and Acton who are represented by the same uh collective bargaining unit. We fully expect that the regional, that that the dispatch district will have, that will have dispatchers that are represented by that very same collective bargaining unit. And our goal is to um have the same people that we've invested in be our dispatchers in the regional district concept uh going forward with we, well, I would guess would be the same or better um working conditions. But that's, what what those specific working conditions are is is kind of outside the district agreement, but it is what we work on in the development grant phase and try and get through all that.
Right. So I appreciate that. And where I'm going with this is, I see that um well, as you just said, there's a potential for a supervisory dispatch position. And it looks like there's also going to be um a new hire of an executive director. And then possibly down the road, a treasurer. And I'm just thinking, if we're adding these positions, um I I don't have the budget in front of me. We had it the other time, and I don't know if it's been changed. But I just want to make sure that we're not going to end up um losing all the efficiency and spend even more money on this new system. Because if I see, you know, two or three new positions being added, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I I don't think, I don't think there's a net, I don't think there's a net expansion with the two communities. I I think, I think the net, I think this, I I, and like I said, I have to go back. I know if the chiefs know this off the top of their head, but I I think it's a, it's the same. It's just a different configuration of position.
What about the executive director? Isn't that a new position?
That would be a new position.
Right.
But I, but I would, uh the thing that we haven't really talked a lot about is that regional dispatch centers are subsidized um in a very favorable way um by the Commonwealth through um fees collected through uh via cell phone surcharges. So something that's kind of walled off from the annual state budget. Um and so that subsidy greatly offsets the cost to operate the regional dispatch. So um Concord's budget currently for our dispatch operations um would be offset, I think significantly by uh as as part of the district through contributions from the state.
Jane. Um thanks for this. Uh and Matt and Terry and Susan, thank you for your questions. You uh covered a lot of the things I initially was gonna ask. Although one of the questions I that that strikes me right off the bat, because um while I have not been a and a regular user of nine one one, thank God. Um I can appreciate what a valuable service this is and how uh important it is to a lot of the residents of Concord that that they have a uh a connection to the dispatchers. Um now Stephen, if if going forward under this agreement, you and um and uh and manager, man, um and your honor, are the two uh are are equal heads of this uh dispatch center. Who who runs the dispatch center right now? I I have been under the assumption that that was uh Chief O'Connor. Okay, so so in a sense, you're supplanting his role. Uh and and you're, you and your counterpart in Acton are taking on?
No, that's, that's where the distinction between the board of directors, some of the role of the board of directors is similar to our uh our oversight as managers of operations, of of the overall operations. Uh neither John nor I, oops, jeez. Um oh please. That's why I got a talk on my hands. Um neither John nor I, uh you know, schedule dispatchers or do any of that kind of stuff. It's those operational um considerations that are currently um Chief O'Connor's would remain with the operations committee, which would be then Chief Burrows and Chief O'Connor uh and Chief Judge and Chief Hart. Um and I think the, you know, and I'm not, I don't, I don't want to speak for them, but you know, we wouldn't be here tonight if if the service chiefs didn't think that there was an operational model that worked well for both communities.
Um okay, and then and then further on that line, um as I recall correctly, uh the the new dispatch center is going to be based in Acton. Does that uh change? How does that impact the the current employees of Concord and the current process or model of of behavior of um staff and a um and supervisory uh role? If it's now going to be based in Acton? And further on that point, um in terms of any hiring for this new center, um how does, how do conquer, current Concord employees uh fare? What what's that? How do you, what's your, what do you envision? I I'm I'm concerned that that uh location and um the other benefits of of moving that center of of effort to Acton may uh impact folks who currently work for Tom, for Concord.
Well, I'll, I'm gonna defer to Chief O'Connor in terms of the operation considerations on that. And and I'll just state the goal that we said from the very beginning, which is to ensure that we have opportunities for the, for our current dispatchers to remain our, to remain dispatching Concord nine one one calls, whether, you know, as part of a district um with the same or better working conditions. That remains the goal. Um but I'll defer to Chief in terms of operationally what that would mean.
Yeah, um Jane, I I I I heard you question a couple ways. I don't know if it was part of it was convenience of travel that you were referencing or or not. The operations of the dispatchers would be the same, the same job. Um you know, dispatching, answering the phones, dispatching, fire, fire and police. Uh quite, quite frankly, Acton has a a better facility than we have. I mean, it's, it's, it's much more room uh for dispatchers. Uh you know, we we think that that, you know, that would work out very well, having uh both uh units work, working together there. And uh you know, as far as travel to the locations, our dispatchers live in a number of different communities. Some some dispatchers will benefit because the ride and we shorter to that facility, and and some might be a few minutes uh further, but it it really uh should not uh be a a huge impact on anyone.
Yeah, I was actually not thinking so much of the commute as as much as the the working conditions, the neighborhood and and uh the location of the department. Um I guess the the final question sort of within this, the soup is that um I this seems to be getting further along, and I I'm not sure when we, when this was determined that we were that we were moving forward fully on this. Um I understand that it's under a a grant uh to consider. But I also know that uh I've certainly received a lot of inquiries from residents and and some which were fairly explicit in their concerns about losing control over this. Um I I don't necessarily think that's simply because it's always been done one way and and change is hard. I think some of that is true. Um but I think that the efficiencies for Concord ha- I I need, I think it would be helpful to have those far better enumerated. You know, how this further benefits Concord, because I don't think that's come um come out as clearly. Um I'm also imagining since uh since cell coverage as a as an impact on uh public safety has long been an iss- issue in Concord, and I suspect there are parts of Acton, although I don't know whether Acton is as rife with death spots as we are. Um so if this ends up benefiting I wa- I want to imagine how this plays forward if we've now gone to a regional uh s- situation versus a local one.
As far as the cell calls that the dispatchers get, the nine one one calls, those those come in and those are all those are all all mapped. So they know the locations of where the, where those so called cell calls are coming in. There's a lot of technology that's used, used in the dispatch centers. And you know, there's, you know, people talk about familiarity and things like that. There's all sorts of different uh things that people can uh take use for technology uh from, from our own uh G I S systems of mapping. But the map maps them calls when they, when they come in, they're pretty, pretty, uh really have improved over the last few years of of where those calls are exactly coming from. And dispatchers have tools, you know, quite frankly. Uh there's very rare for us to hire someone as a dispatcher. I I know that's what brought the familiarity with the town that are coming from our, from Concord. Uh our applicants but come for the most part from outside of the community. So there's not many people that have grown up in the town and can, and can tell you, you know, this is, this rock is on this corner. I mean, that, those are kind of old kind of things that people allude to. These are jobs where people are using technology and 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 the professionalism be able to use that and leverage that so that we deliver exceptional uh service. Uh and and we talked about it at the last meeting, and you know, Chief Judge really could speak on this too. The coordinate, coordinating of resources, particularly in the, in the fire service, is they're using, utilizing mutual aid on a, on a constant basis. On the, on the police side, uh not as much until something a major um kicks off. But I know there's been references to to the, to the prisons in town, which we know where, where those are geographically located, that should we ever had had something like a walk away from the farm or something like that. Those are immediately going to affect both communities at at once. And when you have have people, in my experience, uh uh working uh in agency that work multiple jurisdiction all the time. Being able to work together as a team and have people that are familiar with one another and and have them in the same location, be able uh communicate and share information, you get, you benefit from a a much better situational awareness in a very ser- and when very serious situations occur. So there really is some operational uh benefit to uh the regionalization approach.
Um Linda, you're on mute.
Yeah. Trying to spare you the telephone rings in the background. Um I'd like to ask a couple of questions or a couple of comments, if I may. Um and I appreciate all the work that's already gone into this. Um I think one of the questions that was already asked, and I didn't clearly catch the definition. What the expected timeline is on on moving forward and some of the pieces, and whether this governance agreement will need to be signed sooner rather than later as a part of the grant application?
Uh it it will um by the end of the month, essentially, to to be able to um, you know, I guess, be considered for final approval for the, for the development grant. And then if we are approved of the development grant, we would spend the coming months ironing out a lot of the um unknowns right now. Including um technological interface, you know, operational, um you know, operational methodologies and um, you know, um labor issues, and and that would be what we would be focusing on next. Um I did pull up the the feasibility study.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Linda.
So um if it's within the month, then you will be looking for a approval of this governance agreement. And once that governance agreement is signed, um there's a commitment from the town. Even a priority, and let's say there's a commitment from the town, assuming that then grant funds would be forthcoming. Do I have that correct?
Yes, and I think that if we got to the end of the but the, the reason why the district agreement is required as a part of the development grant process is the development grant, the development grants are usually in the hundreds of thousands, in some cases millions of dollars. Because it really is the next step in rebuilding the regional dispatch center. And they want to see that there is a commitment from the communities that are involved to move forward. And that it's a highly competitive program and that it makes sense that they want to do that. And so our goal here this evening is to show what that, what would be binding and certainly not is, you know, the town of Concord could still withdraw from the district if it doesn't work and we would just go back to status quo, which as Chief O'Connor just indicated, we would lose some of the operational benefits that he just stated, and we would also lose what's, and these aren't exact numbers, but our, our feasibility study consultant, who's done a number of these, said that Concord's alone recurring cost savings would be about $415,000 a year. Having just come through the budget process, I know that that's, that's meaningful. And so we really it's just demonstrating that Acton and Concord are committed to moving forward with this for the reasons that I think, like I said, are set forth by all the chiefs and and others.
So, so thank you for that response. I too had some questions about the membership of the board, because I did see the role of the executive director, role of representatives from the operations committee. And there was another committee of the finance committee. It looked like there'd be a representative on the board. So I would just suggest that, you know, before you come back to the board, there'd be more clarity about that in, in terms of the membership there. Related to that question, I did see a clause that specifically spoke to, once we agreed to this, that even if for some reason there is a delay in terms of making it implementation feasible in the near term, we still have committed to the district agreement. And I did read that in this document. So would anyone like to speak to that?
That language is really a sign to the state that, that Acton and Concord believe in the regional approach. And that even if we don't get the grant funds, it really, it makes it so we can continue to pursue state funding to establish a regional dispatch center without having to come back for a revote of the district agreement. And again, it's a sign to the state that there's a commitment at the local level.
Okay, and you know, a really basic question here for I think everyone's certification. Current public safety personnel, do they remain employees of their respective towns? Subject to the compensation classification systems and so forth that have already been set up? Or, and is it just the dispatchers and the new executive director? That will be subject to, to salaries as determined by the district?
It would be just the dispatchers. That would be, from our employees, from Concord's and Acton's employees, it would be the dispatchers who would be employed by the district. And, but like I said, I think it's, it's, it's important that the same collective bargaining unit represents both dispatchers of both communities currently. And we are assuming they will represent the dispatchers and for the district. And again, I, I, I don't know how to say it any differently. It's our, it's our goal and our expectation that it's all of the same people with better, with the same or better working conditions. And, but, but we would still have to negotiate a collective bargaining agreement with the, the dispatchers for the district. And, but we have, you know, existing collective bargaining agreements that would be our, our basis for that.
And I'm sorry to have a series of questions here, but I'm just trying to, since you're talking about hoping to come back to us within a month, I'm trying to flush out some issues here in preparation for that. The agreement also speaks to the respective towns involved in this being responsible for equipment and the operations of their own public safety networks. In addition to the assessment that's going to emanate from the district to each of our towns. So I'm trying to understand the relationship there in terms of costs and also maintaining the networks. And I guess the other piece of this that I'll just wrap into my question while I'm at it is that with the POV homeland security requirements and tie in that, you know, local public safety personnel are trying to coordinate with how that will also be coordinated with the district. So there's multiple questions there, but they all relate.
The answer is by and large the same, which is most of those details get sorted out as, as we go through the development grant process. In a regional dispatch, in a regional district, there are, because, because the towns have existing equipment and technology and things like that. They both bring some things into the relationship. And so it is, there is a bit of a yours mine and ours that goes along with this, where there will be equipment that will need to be purchased by the district to make sure that both communities, that, that, that the regional dispatch center can serve both communities. But then there's equipment that Concord has now that Concord will continue to use and Acton has now that Acton will continue to use. But then over time, as, as equipment, and this is one of the great benefits of being in a regional district, over time, you know, capital level purchases of equipment will need to be made for the district. And the state will subsidize those, whereas if Concord is not a part of a regional district, the state will not subsidize those capital level equipment upgrades. But again, the details, the details are what needs to be sorted out in the next phase.
Yeah, and I think that the, part of the challenge here with some of the questions is that the details will be sorted out in the next phase, but the commitment has to come now with, at the, with this governance agreement upfront. So, and I would, I, I think it would be beneficial for all of us to also hear some questions from the public if they have them. So you have the benefit of that as well today. But if someone can walk through again, you know, I, I certainly have availed myself of this opportunity and I know other citizens that have walking into the, the local police station or fire department with some either immediate needs or some questions that need to be answered. So how do you see that interface continuing under this arrangement?
I'll defer to Chief, Chief O'Connor and Chief Judge about that. But I, I mean, there are, there are many ways to do that. I, there was a situation a week or two ago at the Lester Police Department. And her car drove into the front of it. And I believe Lester's, Lester's dispatch center is located in the city of Worcester. And so dispatcher saw that on a video screen and dispatched the police name there within moments. And so that, like, as Chief O'Connor said, there are, there are technologies that exist that make it so the most people either calling or visiting wouldn't really know the difference. But in terms of the station itself, I'll defer.
Well, it would, it would be depending on, you know, after we have some discussions, decide which way we want to go. There's, with, you know, technology, existing staff during the days moving, moving people around. There would be at the desk.
Chief, unfortunately breaking up, we can't hear you.
What the type of call, call is a walk-in that happens. If it's a matter of getting a form. How's that? Can you hear me now?
A little better.
Okay. So it, it depends really who the person that comes into the station, who they're going to interface with. If it's someone coming in that requires a police officer, dispatcher will call a police officer from the road or someone is in the building to handle that situation. There are times, certain things that dispatchers can handle. You know, with directions or handing a form out or something like that. You know, we learned during, you know, particularly through COVID recently is, you know, having officers to, you know, take making calls directly to people when certain business calls, calls are made. Now, some regional dispatchers with other types of, with a police officer or a different classification at their front desk. Others use technology and a phone to pick up and they can talk to the dispatcher at the regional center. It's, you know, those would be details that we'd have to work out and would have to get some feedback from the community to see what the expectations are, whether it's whether you have a comfort level with technology or would want to interface with a person at the station.
Will, both IT support and all the treasury, you know, the financial audit support and so forth. Is that all going to be provided by Acton? Is that the concept at this point?
I think generally, yes, but there is a transition period that we have to work through. And so some of those duties may get divided on an ad hoc basis to, as we form the district and get the center operational. But I think generally, and John, if you want to speak to this, I think, you know, Acton is a fiduciary agent and could either provide contracted services or if we determine that the contracted services aren't sufficient or are taking too much of Acton's time, then we could engage, you know, outside vendors or bring on potentially staff or something like that. It's just like, just like building any other organization.
Matt, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. So I just wanted to go down a different path here. There's, it looks like this agreement anticipates the possibility of borrowing. And also I'm just curious, like, there could be other obligations that the district could assume, such as OPEV. And I'm just, you know, recalling our, the recent public hearing about the Minuteman Regional School District and thinking about, you know, the risks there, especially with the ability of someone to be able to leave the district and perhaps leave the remaining, you know, members of the district on the hook for whatever those liabilities might be. And, you know, in the middle, in, in, in the tech, you know, Minuteman Technical School District situation, well, we're already in, in it. We're, we're kind of stuck. But here, we're, you know, just at the outset. You know, what kinds of debts do we assume that this district might incur? We, I see that, you know, each select board has to approve, but hey, that happens with Minuteman as well. And I don't think it's ever been an impediment. And likewise, you know, will this district, you know, have their own OPEV liabilities that are going to be accumulating? And, and will any of this be carried on the town's books? Who will be on the hook for it as we go forward? It just seems like a good moment to be thinking about all these things.
So the answer is the town would not, the town's assessment would be, just like our assessment to Minuteman, would be our share of what those obligations are. Because we do want to be able to be in a state pension system, pension for the benefit of the employees who we want to retain. Yeah, there will be some kind of OPEV obligation. I think the state, the state subsidizing regional districts may minimize the budget impact for us. In fact, it, it, it's better for us being in a district on that scoremat because we do have an offset to carry that. But the, the, the employees that we have now, their OPEV number would be carried on the district. And in terms of borrowing, the district may have a capital improvement that needs to be made, it needs to be borrowed. It may have, you know, at some point in time, it may grow and may need to, you know, acquire a new facility or something like that. But that's where, just like, and I think Minuteman is a good example. We have an assessment that depends in some part on what's happening. But Minuteman, the district does the borrowing for the school and, and, you know, carries its own OPEV. I think
Yeah, but it's just like there used to be 14 towns or something and now they're nine. And so, and so while your assessment is only a point in time, you're still left holding the obligation, the long-term obligation.
Right.
It seems, you know, again, I, I'd love to have some sort of, you know, in the termination, somebody has to assume the value of their share of the liability or something. I mean, it just seems like, at least in Minuteman's case, it's been very detrimental to us to stay in from that perspective.
You're right, but I think there's also a service provision perspective that makes it that that's why we're in it, is to have the educational opportunity. And the thing I think, the thing I think sometimes, I think maybe we are losing a little bit of sight of is we're paying it today. We have that OPEV liability today because we have the dispatch employees. So it's not, it's a transfer, not a, an addition.
Yeah, but it's our town's liability. It's not our share of potentially other towns' liabilities. Because the extra services that were given to them that then created those cumulative liabilities, now we're the ones left paying for them. See, they left the district in the Minuteman's case, that's what happened.
No, I understand that. I think it's, I, I think there's, there's limits to that comparison. Because I think that we carry that today. And then without the meaningful state support for regional dispatch centers. Whereas if we did the region, regional dispatch, we, our OPEV number goes down. The region has now an OPEV obligation that is in part offset by contributions from the state. And so that's, that's, I think, the thing that we need to keep in mind is we're spending money on this today.
I understand it, it's money we're spending on our employees providing services to us. That, that's the difference.
I guess I did, alright, that's fine.
Yeah, well, and, you know, related to that, you know, the, the way the language reads right now, it says that the district board will authorize the debt and, and will then give that information to the select board. And then they have 60 days to disapprove. So
Sounds familiar.
Right, and, and also, you know, the potential of having the cost of having to have to care, call a special town meeting and, you know, would, who's going to pick up that cost? So Terry.
So just briefly, who signs this government, governance agreement? Is it the two town managers? Okay, so I think I heard you say, or Linda said, that you're going to, you have to sign by the end of the month, but you're going to come back to the select board. I, I think that's what I heard because there were, just to reiterate some of the suggestions I heard from my colleagues about clarity on the governance, seeing the budget again to make, you know, in case everything's changed since last time. And especially I agree with what Jane said, that the benefits need to be enumerated more. I'm a big supporter of it, but that's because of my history and how I've seen it work and what I know from other states. But I don't think, I think Chief O'Connor started to talk about the benefit of Acton and Concord working together and getting to know each other. And I think all of that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more when you come back to us. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the select board? If not, I'd like, no, Jane, go ahead. You're on mute, Jane.
I wanted to reiterate or just follow up on, on two questions. One, Stephen, you outlined a very exciting diversity, equity and training program. And that's something that I assume that as Concord goes through it, there will be some, there'll be follow-on and it may become part of the standard approach to hiring. How does that, how does some of the, how does Concord ensure that this and this being any regional activity would further the goals that Concord's identifying for its employees? And to that end, it just strikes me that we have a regional example already in Concord. Not Minuteman, but the high school. And that has had, and I know it all too well, given the proximity in this house. There, there have been some really great are, there have been some really great part, you know, components of that and some consistently troublesome ones. One, it strikes me that since emergency dispatch and our high schools, and our schools, but our high school in particular, probably should be, you know, it's one of the areas that we want the greatest security around. And it's surprising Carlisle isn't in the, in this mix because Acton obviously has its own regional school district. So we're, we're sort of, that's an area where we're going in different directions as, as regional operations.
Anyone want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
So, good evening, members of the select board, or good afternoon. Nice to see you all. Thanks for having us here again. I think with, with regionalization, as mentioned earlier, there's a lot of reasons that it benefits different communities, but it's always challenging to try to find opportunities that have sort of the right timing, the right people in place, the right financial aspects. And so you'll see us, you know, Stephen and I and other managers work together on several things, get to a point and say, you know what? This isn't going to work. Let's keep moving. But that's not happening here. I think this is a, this is a situation where we have public safety officials that we're entrusting to protect our residents, and all four of them are fully behind this program as a way to benefit public safety. So while there are other regionalization opportunities I would love to explore with Concord and Foxborough and everyone else, this particular one, at this particular time, is the one that has a very high rate of success, potential success, which is why we're really excited to be here to talk about it tonight.
Thank you. I would open it up if there are any, to the public, if there's any comments or questions from the public. Henry Dane?
I have unmuted myself. I'm Henry Dane, 58 Everett Street. The signing of this agreement creates the district. That's what the agreement is clear, that once this agreement is signed, this is the agreement between the towns and the district is created. All of the powers of this district, the hiring of personnel, the compensation of personnel, the policies, the procedures, the budgets, the acquisitions, the purchases, everything else is in the sole control of the Board of Directors. If you go down the list of everything, all the powers that are granted by the statute and all the powers that are granted by this agreement, those powers are in the hands of the Board of Directors. The Finance Committee is purely advisory. The Operations Committee, with the chiefs on it, is purely advisory. All the decisions are finally made by the directors. Once the agreement is signed, the select board has no control over or the appointment of who serves as a director. There is no process for appointing directors other than under the designation of the directors that are named in the agreement, which is the two town managers. This is, and they have complete financial and budgetary control, and they have the power to assess the costs that are incurred against the towns, and the towns must pay them. So that the select board, neither the select board nor the town meeting has any fiscal control, whatever, over the operations of this independent authority. And disentangling from it is a nightmare, as you will read in the provisions for disentangling. And we have also very little control over what other towns join this, this district. Also, something that hasn't been mentioned is that, and it's been skipped over, is that the, one of the things that the, that the authority has in its power is to make the allocation of the costs between or among the towns. And there is a formula that is mentioned, a formula that's based on relative populations and relative numbers of 911 calls from the various towns in the district. And I don't think anybody has done an analysis of what the impact is, or the impact of that formula will be on our financial responsibility for the operations of this district. We are involved in other districts, and Matt has mentioned the fact that sometimes you get surprises when you were involved in other towns in a district. But at least even with our regional school district and our Minuteman tech budget, we at least have the authority to make the appropriations by the town meeting. We still have to appropriate the money. And if we don't, if we don't appropriate the money, as in with the regional school district, then the school, the regional school district has to go back and recompute its budget and go back to the two towns, and the town meeting then still has the authority to appropriate the money. So this is, this district has a level of independence, which I think far exceeds any other relationship that we have. And it's something that is, I, I'm not sure that it's a good precedent or a good model for us to follow, for the town to delegate so much of its administrative, administrative and management and fiscal authority to essentially to, to town managers of the two towns who are the directors of the, of the, of the district.
Thank you for your comments. Diane?
Thank you, Linda, and thank you for this very careful and thorough examination of all this. I've had the privilege of reading the preserving the excellence of public safety communications in Concord by Edward J. Collins, the Center for Public Management. And it is, it is, I believe, the, the work of the dispatchers themselves in terms of their evaluation of this future proposal. And I wonder if there's anyone on the select board who has, I'm sure you've all read this, but have you had a chance to discuss this personally with the present dispatchers who do not seem predisposed to believe this is either a fiscally wise thing to do or a prudent way to go forward? Thank you for that.
Okay. Any other public comments? Any last response from the two town managers or anyone else among the chiefs represented here today?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I think one thing that I'm going to try to explain to, to the board here in Acton later this afternoon is that currently the town hired me to oversee operations of all the departments in town, including the police and fire departments, and, and in this case, the, the public safety communicators. So 100% of the responses, 100% of the responsibility for overseeing dispatch operations is, falls on me. I have people that work underneath me that I know do a great job, and if they have any help, I provide that help. Every year, we approve, recommend a budget for public safety, which includes funding for dispatch. Every year, the Finance Committee here in Acton and the select board ask us many, many questions about those budget recommendations. And occasionally, we change them based on feedback we're seeing, or occasionally they get not supported and we make adjustments. All the things that are happening right now in Acton would happen again if we formed a district. The town would be entrusting 100% of the responsibility for oversight of dispatch to me, and I'd be doing that as part of this regional district. And any budget that we bring forward would have to be approved through our town meeting in the same way that it is now. So it's certainly going to be a change, working together. And I think we're going to have new opportunities, new collaborations. It's not going to be exactly the same, but I think it's a lot more similar to what we're doing now than I think, you know, I think we need, we need to, it's really more similar to what we're doing now than, than anything else that we're discussing here.
So when you talk about the budget, coming back to you in your model that you're describing, you're referring to the assessment back to the town?
Right.
Or, or decision that's already been made by the district?
Well, the district is, in this case, as we're proposing it, the two town managers working together to recommend a budget, which is what uses the assessment. So if, if we're working together to do this, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that the assessment that's generated from the budget that we recommend is something that is, something that we can afford and that the leaders, policymakers and the financial leaders in the community would support. And if it isn't, we'll make those adjustments before we get there because we want this to be successful. This isn't a third party that we're hiring, you know, 100 miles away to run our dispatch operation. This is the same people that are running it now. We're just coming up with a creative way to do it together to save each community money and to provide new opportunities for public safety enhancements and collaborations and professional growth and development opportunities for, for our valued employees.
Yeah, I think to build on what John is saying, it's obviously, it's the same structure here. And Chief O'Connor, who oversees the region, who oversees the dispatch budget, we meet to discuss the public safety budget and we review aspects of it. And then we decide on what works, that should go in town manager's budget, gets presented to the select board and then town meeting. The only difference is we would do that jointly with Acton, which the presence of the chiefs here should be a clear indicator that they believe that, that that's, that they can do that and that doing so is a benefit to both communities. I'm not sure what's role for the select board in terms of this level of operations and communicating directly with employees is contemplated by our charter. But from an operational standpoint, it, it's, the, the same lines of authority are going to be in place. It's just a, a different model for, for overseeing those services, but it's the same level of oversight. In fact, because the Board of Director meetings are subject to open meeting law, there's actually more visibility for this process than we have today.
Okay. Yeah, Chief Judge?
Thank you, Linda. I just wanted to, I just wanted to comment and, and support Chief O'Connor's comments that, you know, there are operational benefits to be realized here. And, and the chief mentioned one of the drawbacks that has been, has been mentioned on occasion is familiarity, yeah, being familiar with the area. And hiring in the fire department, I can tell you that it is very rare that we get somebody who's familiar with the area. They, they're not, you know, they're not coming from Concord with, with one exception. In the past, at least five years, we haven't hired anybody from Concord. So they, they come here and they become accustomed to the area and they learn the geography and the terminology. And it, it really, I think that that's something that is not, not as much of an issue as it's portrayed to be. I just, if you, if you bear with me for a moment, I'd just like to just give you a scenario where my, where my operational benefit that I see comes from. And it's really, it's, it's the calls that we go to that we think of as low frequency and high risk. So we go to a building fire, that is a low frequency call for us. It's also a very high risk call for us. The first 10 minutes of that call can very much make or break the outcome, and it can make or break the safety of the firefighters and the police officers on scene because they're often there before us. In that first 10 minutes, once we arrive, if we hypothetically were to say that we wanted to strike a second alarm, which means that we're calling for more, more personnel, and that's not unusual, that's not unusual for, you know, any structure with, with fire showing from it, with the resources that we have available. The moment we say that second alarm, the dispatcher who is, if it's on an overnight, could possibly be alone, any other shift, there's going to be two of them, but they're going to be responsible for 14 apparatus movements. Five of them will be Concord apparatus, the other nine are from out of town. They're going to be responsible for moving law enforcement, they're going to be responsible for calling utilities. And all of this is taking place, and while this is taking place, they're also responsible for listening to what's going on, on the fire ground as a, a safety backup for the firefighters and police officers working there. So, you know, in, in my, in my view, for me, the reason I support this is because the, the entire thing comes down to the first 10 minutes of those low frequency, high risk calls. It just, it, having three or four people sitting in a room, being able to focus on a major incident, and freeing up people to do some of those ancillary calls in the background to get Acton and Sudbury and Maynard moving towards us, while giving the ability for somebody to remain focused on the call and just continually monitor the fire ground traffic, it just adds such an element to safety that, to me, that, that's, that's where my support comes from. So that's all. Thank you.
No, thank you for that clarification. Any other comments from the public? And I'll just add one quick comment that doesn't need to be commented today, but there was one clause in the agreement that talked about the level of indebtedness does not need to be limited by general law, chapter 44 and 10. And so I think there'll be further questions about that as we go forward. So I, I think giving everyone the opportunity to raise their questions and make some comments hopefully helps you at this point in your stage of your deliberations, and we appreciate the opportunity for the good public discourse. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item, as I indicated during the chair's remarks, we are going to reorder the next agenda items, beginning with number eight, discussion of the town meeting warrant articles that were discussed at the May 11th and May 13th public hearing. And again, asking select board members to consider their positions on each of these. And as I've indicated in previous meetings, this particular discussion is for the select board members only, as we've all attended the public hearings and, and heard some of the comments that were made there. So I'm going to begin with those items that were discussed at the meeting on the 11th. Sorry? For some reason, I'm missing a piece of paper at the moment.
So you mean all the articles from-
On the 11th, yeah.
From 18 through 26?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Linda, if you have your warrant, it's right in the, right in the, on the first page, it says-
Yeah, good. Thank you. I have the 13th handy, and for some reason, the 11th got misplaced. So, okay, let's start with the 18th, which was the senior means tested property tax exemption. And that presentation was clearly, only if legislature has acted on the home rule petition that's before them right now, it's looking less and less likely before town meeting. So we can either defer on that or-
Well, I don't see any reason not to be in support of this article, just in the eventuality that perhaps the state acts. I don't believe it's controversial in any regard.
I, I fully agree with Matt.
Okay. There, there could be some adjustment to the language that came down in terms of the special act, but let's assume right now that is essentially as, as it reads. So any other comments or questions from the select board members?
No.
If not, I would consider motion for affirmative action.
Move affirmative action.
Move affirmative action on Article 18, senior means tested property tax exemption.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Okay, Article 19 was the appropriation for senior means tested tax exemption. And this was the appropriation in the event that that whole rule petition is not acted on by the legislature. Need further discussion? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 19, appropriation for senior means tested tax exemption.
Okay. For a second.
Jane did.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Item 20 was light plant expenditures and payment in lieu of taxes. Any discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 20, light plant expenditures and payments in lieu of taxes.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
It's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Thank you. Article 21, solid waste disposal fund expenditures. There's no discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 21, solid waste disposal fund expenditures.
Second.
Second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Article 22, sewer system expenditures. Okay, no discussion with the clerk? I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 22, sewer system expenditures.
Okay. Second, someone?
Second.
Okay, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
It's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Article 23, sewer improvement fund expenditures. No discussion?
Yeah, I mean, it's not that we don't have opinions or that we, you know, have any concerns about these articles. It's, they, they were so thoroughly discussed during this public hearing. I mean, there's almost nothing left to say, it, it feels like, on these articles. So I just wanted to acknowledge that because we just seem to be going through in rote, but it's not really the case. This is, you know, if you read the public hearing, there was very thorough vetting of everything.
I'm glad you brought that up, Matt, because I think it's really good that we had very thorough public vetting. The meetings ran late, but they were vetted, the articles were vetted very thoroughly and hopefully we'll have them shorter town meeting. So it'll work.
As a consequence, yeah. Just saying, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning.
To the finance committee for.
Yeah. And we're also going through these individually in case there is discussion or further comment.
Yeah.
All right. So I think we're ready for the clerk to call the roll.
Oh, don't we want to?
Yeah, motion?
Yeah. Move affirmative action on Article 23, sewer improvement fund expenditures.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Article 24, water systems expenditures. If there's no further comment, I would entertain a motion.
It, it is pretty substantial cost that's ahead of us on Nagog Pond, but that's something that's for future time.
Yeah. And, okay, any further comment?
Jane? I would also just offer that I think we are incredibly lucky in Concord, not lucky. The water, the, the water department is a credible example of a well-run district and I think we are very, very lucky to have it, especially in how, you know, within the town, within direct town use versus as a separate standalone entity. And I, I, I have great faith that any money ever expended in the, in pursuit of current or future water issues is always a well thought through, well vetted, and also, you know, I think we, we benefit regularly from the invisible work that is done to keep our water in really good shape. And I think the recent PFAS reports, while PFAS is not something anybody could have predicted, you know, we could have been a very, very different place on that. And then these expenditures would have been even different, even potentially more, more impactful.
Thank you, Jane. All right, seeing no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 24, water system expenditures.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
It's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Article 25, to authorize expenditures from the PEG access and cable related fund. Any further discussion? Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 25, authorized expenditures from PEG access and cable related fund.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Article 26, the BD Swim and Fitness Center Enterprise Fund expenditures. Seeing no comments, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 26, BD Swim and Fitness Center Enterprise Fund expenditures.
Okay. Second? Do a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Right, thank you, everyone. I'm now going to move on to those articles that were discussed at the May 13th public hearing, beginning with Articles 30. Yes, you do want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on this whole group of articles. The first one was from the Historic Districts Commission, but specifically to the Planning Board articles, I've had the pleasure of observing that committee for two years now. And there was so much work that went into this and some of them, as the process was going on, it sounded, they sounded confusing to me, but these presentations were so clear on, on all of the Planning Board articles. There was literally very little, if any, comment or additional input from the community on these, which I think speaks to the fact that they worked hard to prepare them so they, they were crystal clear what the goal of each of them was and the thoroughness of the presentations. That's all.
Thank you, Susan, for that. So we'll begin with Article 32, which is the Historic District Map Amendment. Any comments or questions on that?
I mean, there's, it was general support, yeah.
Okay, is there a second? Is that a second then, Matt?
Second.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we haven't moved it, have we?
Yeah. No.
We have not. We have not. Sorry.
Hotchkiss on now.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 32, Historic District Map Amendment.
Okay, second, okay. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Article 35 is the next one, and that's the General Bylaw Amendment for the Tree Preservation Any comments or questions? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 35, General Bylaw Amendment, Amendment, Tree Preservation Bylaw.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, it's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Article 36 is the next one, the Zoning Bylaw Amendment for Flood Plane Conservancy District. All right, seeing no comments or questions, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 36, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Flood Plane Conservancy District.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. The next one is Article 37, again, a zoning bylaw amendment for Table 4 Minimum Parking. Any further comments or questions on this one?
No.
No, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 37, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Table 4 Minimum Parking.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Article 38 is the next one, Zoning Bylaw Amendment for Two Family or Additional Dwelling Units. Any further comments about that? If not, Susan?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that this is an article that was just delayed from last year's town meeting because of the circumstances then, then, and so it's, I'm thrilled that it's being put forward now.
I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 38, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Two Family or Additional Dwelling Unit.
Second. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. The next one is, and the last one on this list, is Article 39, the Zoning Bylaw Amendment for Earth Removal. And I see no comments or questions, so I would entertain a motion.
Move affirmative action on Article 39, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Earth Removal.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Thank you, everyone. Thought it was important to go through those individually, even though we, not, comments notwithstanding about that, we felt they had been thoroughly vetted and at the public hearings. So I'm going to ask the select board members now specifically of the group that we took a position on tonight, are there any among these that you think it's important for the select board to make a recommendation to be included in the annual town meeting materials?
I would say if any, it would be Article 38.
Right.
But given the, the lack of, I don't know, anything but support for Article 38 at the public hearing, I was actually quite surprised. I don't, I mean, and I've seen that the moderator has proposed even putting it on the consent agenda, though I, I would suggest we pull it back off of that for such a significant change. But that, you know, I, I wonder whether we'll even need to make a statement on this. I, I guess we should, though.
I, I tend to agree with you on that, on that one. Terry?
I agree, and I'm wondering if we had low attendance that night because that was the day of the internet outage and the news and notices came out at 6:30 or something and the meeting started at 7:00. I, I think let's just err on the side of caution and?
Yeah.
Write up a little narrative and in case we need it.
I agree. And as somebody who couldn't get on the meeting, I, I agree.
Who, who is willing to do that? Susan?
Yes, I'll do it.
Thank you. The other one I might, any others before I suggest, jump out? The other one I, I would suggest is the appropriation for the senior means tested exemption, just as a, again, basically a supporting statement.
Right, I, I figure we won't have any opportunity to read it, it's going to be like a Senate agenda most likely, right?
Right.
But it, it could be in the meeting, meeting materials anyway.
Exactly, yeah. I'm willing to do that. I'm liaison to the committee.
Okay. Sure.
Unless someone else has a burning desire?
Yeah.
Okay.
What, is my draft statement okay on the affordable housing appropriation?
Yeah, that was helpful, thank you.
Okay.
The, any other suggestions of those that we feel is important to write a statement for? Those were the two on my list that I thought were important.
Right.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm now going to move on to Article 6, which our town moderator is here to walk us through the consent agenda and we appreciate her being here to work with us on this. Carmen, welcome.
So I think you have in the materials, the draft consent agenda, and it's worth noting that all of these things happen in a pretty compressed time period so that you'll note that the draft that I gave you earlier today indicates the recommendations that you just voted on. So clearly, there was a little bit of anticipation in putting this draft together, but given the deadlines that we're working with for getting the consent calendar into the finance committee report, it was important to have it on paper and, and in front of you so that we could discuss it. And, and I already have a few edits that will need to happen to it based on town council's review of the motions, Carrie LaFleur's review of the motions, and the planning board has an, an edit to the motion under one article as well. So, but the important thing is the substance of the consent calendar, and by that I mean which articles are included. And like last year, our effort will be to conclude this year's annual town meeting in a single afternoon. Will be outdoors, it may be hot, and we're coming out of the tunnel on COVID, but we're not quite there, so hoping it will be back to normal next year, but we're still hoping very much to get this meeting done in a single session. And to that end, I have been more aggressive than we ordinarily would in putting together a very robust consent calendar. You'll note, for example, it includes the community. You'll note, for example, it includes the Community Preservation Committee Appropriations, which we included last year. That is typically not an article that Concord includes on its consent calendar, in large part because people like to see what is happening with these projects and hear about them. It is, however, an article that tends to take us a lot of time at town meeting. And while there were many questions by the Finance Committee, there seemed to be general support from the public for the projects that were on the calendar, and so it seemed appropriate to put that one on. As with last year, I've included on the consent calendar only articles, which even though they might be not strictly speaking routine or regularly seen on the consent calendar, I've included only articles which have the support of the Select Board, and if the Finance Committee has taken a position, the support of the Finance Committee. And the same with respect to the Planning Board articles, only those articles which the Planning Board has recommended. And I did not include any articles on which there seemed to be a good deal of public question or some desire to fully debate the article, which was demonstrated at the hearings. And we do have a few of those articles. So in total, I've proposed 26 articles for the consent calendar. I believe we will have four articles on which there will be no motion. That includes Article 1, which is the election of town officers, we've already done that at the polls. It includes the last two articles, Articles 42 and 43, which are unpaid bills and debt rescission. There will be no need for a motion under either of those articles. And then finally, one of the Senior Means Tested Property Tax Articles won't be moved. At this point, I don't know which of them it is. But will, and it would be my proposal to have one omnibus motion that will include all of the motions on which the meeting will be taking no action so that we don't need to talk about each of them individually. Okay, so that will leave us 13 articles to take up for full deliberation, which is actually a couple of articles fewer than we had last year, and we were able to complete the meeting in a single afternoon. So I remain hopeful. But as I do every year, and as moderators before me have done as well, since we have begun using a consent calendar, I'd like to have the input of the Select Board on whether you have a view as to which of these articles is appropriate for inclusion, any that you feel is not appropriate for inclusion, and anything you think I haven't included that perhaps could be on the consent calendar. So you can see the draft. I'm trying to scroll here to the end, there it is, okay. And, let's see, I've included Article 3, which is always on the consent calendar, Article 4, which is the Finance Committee Guidelines Publication, Articles 5 and 6, which are the Personnel Board Classification Actions, Use of Free Cash typically ends up on the consent calendar. The two OPEB articles, Article 11 and Article 12, these are actions that typically are incorporated, or in the past have been incorporated within the town budget. So they're routine actions that always pass without discussion, but this year they're being separated out in this way and will be in the future because the town is advised that this is best practice in terms of how to address these issues at town meeting. But again, total support for these articles, no questions about them at the hearings. It seems appropriate to include those on the consent calendar. Article 14, 15, and 16, these are all pretty straightforward and supported. I understand that Article 16 will only be moved if the grant on parking, for parking comes through. There was a hope that there'd be a grant, and if it does come through, then this appropriation article would be necessary in order for the town to be able to spend the grant. If it doesn't, I would add this article to our omnibus motion of articles on which the meeting will take no action. And then I've included all of the enterprise funds, Articles 21 through 26. I did include the Minuteman budget, and there are a couple reasons for that. One is that we did include this on the consent calendar last year, and it is basically a, we're one of several towns in the Minuteman district, and this is a formula that is applied and gives us our assessment. And we're informed by Steve Ledoux, our representative on the Minuteman School Committee, that in fact, several other towns in the district have already approved this budget, which puts it in a situation where, under the Minuteman Agreement, it's already adopted, whatever we do. So may as well put this on the consent calendar. The Historic District Map Amendment, this is at the request of the property owners, and there seemed to be support and no objection. I've already talked a little bit about the Community Preservation Article, which is Article 34. And then I've placed all of the zoning bylaws on the consent calendar. There was very little question or discussion. It was an exceedingly quick planning board hearing on these articles. And the Tree Preservation Bylaw, I should note, is one of the ones that will be moved differently from what's printed in the warrant because there is a phrase in there that got in there by accident, which needs to be deleted. So we'll take that out, has to do with insect infestation. Nobody's quite sure how it ended up in the warrant, but it's going to come out in the motion. And the flood plain, this is, we don't really have a choice on that one. If we want people to be able to get flood insurance, we need to do this. Minimum parking table. Now, Article 38 is in fact a significant change. We've had some discussion about whether any aspect of this article is subject to the amendments in Chapter 40A, which call for a majority versus a two-thirds vote, and the advice of Town Council is it does not. So it still requires two-thirds. But again, the only comments from the public on this article were positive, and it is carrying out a specific recommendation in the Envision Concord Long Range Plan. And the Earth Removal Bylaw as well seemed pretty uncontroversial and is just kind of a logical extension of the bylaw that was already there. So that's it, and I would turn it back to you, Linda, and I would greatly appreciate any input that the board has.
Okay. Matt?
Yeah, so I just wanted to go back to 38 again, that I think that one thing to consider is that this zoning bylaw amendment was proposed last year as well, and we went through the public hearings with this last year, you know, and then withdrew before town meeting. And at that time, during those public hearings, there were concerns expressed by various members of the public during the public hearing, and they may have felt that they have now registered those and that to come back this year with the identical article was unnecessary. So, you know, again, I'm a major proponent of this article, but I just feel like we should respect the possibility that, you know, people may want to weigh in on this. And even though we had a public hearing and there was strictly positive feedback at that time, that really, we should be thinking of this as a two-year process in this case. And then while I have the floor, I would just say that between Articles 18 and 19, there might be a possibility that, you know, while we identify one as not being moved, that the other could go on the consent agenda. And the reason to say that is, once again, this is something that we've done in past years. There's universal town support for these processes. I don't think that, you know, any controversy would arise with them. So I'd suggest, you know, I don't know what the procedure is when you have an either-or, one not being moved, one on the consent counter, Linda, but if there's some way to do that tango, I would take the dance.
Terry?
I agree with Matt. I think 38 is a big enough change that we might want to take it off the consent calendar, but put on 18 and 19, even though one of them's not going to be moved. I also have a few other ideas. Carmen, you and I talked a little bit, Article 2 maybe should be added to the consent calendar.
Yes.
I'm wondering about Article 31, which is the Home Rule Legislation About the Fossil Fuel Infrastructure. I don't remember hearing any negative comments in the public hearing or at any other time. And I think there could be many, many people who want to speak and say something positive of why they support it, and it could take up a real, you know, one or two hours. And so I think at least if it's debated, we should have a way to, I mean, there's so many people in support of this, and I don't know of anybody that's against it. So I think it should either be on the consent calendar or have some control over the timeline for it. And then my final thing is, question on the budget articles and the capital article. If I recall correctly, last year, I was surprised actually that the budget articles were on the consent calendar, and yet, that was fine. We didn't have any issue with it. So I'm wondering what's different this year in your thinking, why you want to not put them on the consent calendar?
So first, yes, Article 2 will go on the consent calendar, actually not, is it Article 2? Yeah, and that is to hear reports. And so the motion under Article 2 is just to accept the town report. Article 2 also historically is where we move the consent calendar. So that's why it gives me a little bit of pause to put Article 2 on the consent calendar if we're moving the consent calendar under Article 2. But certainly the motion under Article 2, which asks the town to accept the town report, will go on the consent calendar. The budget articles, you know, I think that the budget articles are really the biggest thing that we do at town meeting, even though they tend not to command the greatest depth and length of deliberation. So as a fundamental matter, it's hard to put budgets on the consent calendar. We did it last year because we were really in extremis with the pandemic. And it's not quite so bad this year. We have a lot of vaccinated people. We don't know exactly who's vaccinated or if everybody's vaccinated, but the risk is so much lower now than it was last year. And we also have overall fewer articles. So it was my feeling that these budget articles should go on, stay on our agenda for full deliberation. And so that was my thinking.
Other comments from the Select Board?
I mean, the one on sustainability, there was significant debate during the public hearing. I mean, there were two folks that stood up and, you know, shared their, actually three, that shared their concerns with the article. So, yeah, I didn't hear only unanimous support. Now, I do agree that there is some risk of a lengthy debate, but hopefully it's kind of offset by many other articles that aren't controversial this year.
If I might add also, we will, last year, we had a one-minute time limit on comments from the floor, and we will have that again this year. So, and I thought it was remarkable how concise and to the point people were able to be. There was still a very worthwhile debate on a number of articles, even with people having only a minute to speak.
It improved quality, I'd say, not just time, yeah.
So we'll do that again this year, and I think that will really help with an article like Article 31.
Carmen, I heard your comment on Article 16, and I'm sure you've already considered this, but I just, that was the article where if the grant is not funded, there will be no need to move that. I would just, unless the town knows something, we don't, some of the, there's some, there have been delays in announcements about grant awards, so I just hope we're not caught up in that.
So,
Situation, yeah.
Yes, a couple of these, the budget looking capital were on the regular general last year. In fact, as you may recall, it was an amendment offered to the budget on town meeting. So just clarify that. And then in terms of Article 16, I actually discussed this with our CFO today, and the guidance hasn't come out as, you know, succinct and as quickly as we would hope. And given that there's not an immediate need, when we came up with Article 16, we had a very different sense of what the timing of things were going to be. And in kind of reviewing it, there may not be a really compelling need to, you know, amend, you know, offer a different motion for the budget and keep that in. So we are reviewing that, and we expect to have a recommendation well in advance of town meeting on that. But we're still talking about it.
Okay.
Did I answer that, Linda?
Well, Carmen is the one who needs that information at this point.
Yeah, I guess the question is, does that mean that I should omit Article 16 from the consent calendar because it's not going to be moved, or should I leave it there? And, I mean,
Well, I think I'll defer to Carrie because she did have the discussion with the Chair of Finance Committee.
Okay.
But she's, sorry, Carmen, she's here, because I think it'll either end up on the consent calendar or on the list of take no action.
Okay. So, and I'll just note that I feel it's very important to have the consent calendar published in the Finance Committee report so that everybody has the opportunity to see it before they get to town meeting. But that doesn't necessarily, the fact that it's published doesn't preclude us from making an edit here or there when we get to the floor of town meeting. We just want to keep that to a minimum because it gets confusing, especially when we don't have an audio-visual capability where we can put up a red-line version of the consent calendar on the screen. It will, if anything comes off or goes on, it will just have to be verbally explained to people, which is manageable, but a little harder than having it on a screen. So we're not written in stone here, but it is, but we'd like to get it as close to right as possible.
Okay. Any other, Jane?
I just wanted to agree with Matt. I mean, I wish that the sustainability article was not, was fully uncontroversial, but as someone who works in this area full-time, But as someone who works in this area full-time, I have heard from several within Concord specific issues with it. So I agree with Matt. I think this, it belongs on the floor.
Okay, Susan?
I just wanted to echo what Matt and Jane said about 31. I think it's different enough from what we're currently doing that it deserves to be, to have the opportunity to, for public discourse.
Okay. I think we've given you our best advice and recommendations, Carmen.
Thank you very much. Very helpful. I will be removing Article 38, adding Article 32. And I'll think about Article 18 and 19, because if I put them both on the, either way, if I put them on or if I keep them off, either way, a change will end up needing to be made to the consent calendar because one of them isn't going to be moved. So I'll just give some thought to which way feels more straightforward for the folks who are attending town meeting. But thanks very much for that.
Thank you. I'm reminded from our discussion with Carmen that last year, we did have a select board statement of support for the CPA article, just because of the nature of the scope of what's covered in that article. Does that make sense to people? Okay.
Well, I'm the liaison, so that probably falls on my shoulders.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay.
Okay. All right, everyone. We're, thank you for that discussion. We're now moving on to Agenda Item Number 7, which is Article 7 Personnel Bylaw Amendment. And as we know from attending the public hearing, there was a great deal of discussion about what was before the Personnel Committee. And I see we've got representatives here today. Did they want to make a comment? Anyone from the Personnel Committee?
I guess if I could just kind of tee this up, Linda?
Okay, fine.
So we learned, we did send some changes at the Personnel, I say we, Amy sent changes that were under review by the Personnel Board to the, what's in the warrant article, to the moderator for review. I don't know if Carmen wanted to relay on that conversation, but I think it's changed our view of process, so.
Yeah, the town was kind enough to share with me the proposed motion under Article 7 on the Personnel Bylaw Amendment, which would have included a number of changes, which you see in the materials that are here for the meeting. And to ask me in advance whether I felt that that motion would be within the scope of the original article, and I told them that I felt it was not. Too many changes, too substantive. Touchstone, the hallmark for scope decisions is notice to folks who have read the warrant article. And it was my feeling that there would be voters who had read the warrant article and would be surprised, feel not informed, perhaps not even have shown up when they might otherwise have cared about this article because of the number of changes that were in it. So it, you know, I hate to do this to a town board or committee that I know is working hard to try and reframe something, but we are duty-bound to stay within the scope of the articles as published in the warrant. And I did not feel that this proposed version of the motion stayed within those four corners. And it's the moderator's call on these things. I did consult with Town Council, and there was nothing in that consultation that caused me to change my view.
Okay.
And do you mind, Linda?
Yes. Amy?
Just for clarification, because I'm not sure who's followed all of this. You know, we have what was printed in the warrant. Then at the last select board meeting, it was agreed to go back and let the Personnel Board talk about the feedback that they had received. And that's what led to some proposed amendments based on the feedback received. So that's what Carmen then advised on, was those amendments that came out of the discussion from feedback that had been received from citizens. But the board has not yet had the opportunity to meet again since getting that ruling from Carmen. So the board is at the point where they need to consider what to do about that.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think the select board has now heard that the amendment is out of consideration at this point, and the Personnel Committee is meeting again soon. When is that happening? Do we know?
The date is not finalized. We're trying to have those coming on, so maybe he knows more. We were trying to get something for Thursday, but I don't know if we've confirmed that we have a quorum yet. No, no, not yet. So just as soon as we can get a quorum, we will meet.
So are you anticipating this week, next week? What are you anticipating?
We're hoping for this week. But I cannot, since I haven't heard from somebody, I don't know that it will be this week.
Sure, I just wanted some idea. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Linda, if I might just note, the deadline for motions is the 21st, and our meeting with Town Council is next Tuesday to review all of the motions. And just a couple days after that is the deadline for town meeting materials to go to the printer. We don't have much choice about this. The printer just needs some time. I know that that deadline is kind of far in advance of town meeting, but it does put some pressure on us to have our decisions made, not only for the purpose of a smooth functioning town meeting so that we're actually moving things the way they're printed in the materials that are distributed at the meeting, but also from a notice perspective, because I know from the hearing that there have been a lot of people interested in this topic. And my guess is that they're all wondering what the plan is so that they know how they will react. Last year, for example, anyone who had a proposed amendment to any article, I asked them to get it to me if they possibly could in time for inclusion in the town meeting materials. And that is the 27th at noon. So we did have a couple of amendments that were not in the materials last year, and it's tough without having a handout and without having a video screen. It is tough to have the amendments that way. So if we were going to have any, my very strong preference would be to have them in writing and in the town meeting materials booklet if we possibly could.
So and Carmen, would you also clarify, will the motions be, again, will the motions be in the FinCom?
The motions will not be in the FinCom report. FinCom report goes to press before the motions are done and reviewed by Town Council. The motions will be in the town meeting materials booklet, and they will be posted on the website as soon as they are reviewed by Town Council and finalized.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think the Personnel Board has requested an opportunity to have further discussion among themselves about how they're going to proceed. How are select board members feeling about that?
Well, it sounds like there's nothing right now that we can opine on, other than to give direction as to what we've seen, and that is out of bound or out of scope. So, I mean, I continue to be... I think the cart and the horse have gotten switched, and I haven't seen anything that would reverse the order. So before we do anything to the Personnel, to the operations, I think we need to, we need to go through standard procedure and, you know, not throw it out before we've, before we, I mean, typically, the Select Board reviews and redrafts bylaws. I mean, it's been, you know, it's usually the beginning of every year, looking at what your committee assignments are and what you're responsible for.
Yeah. So we've already deferred taking action on this once. I think there is still time for us to do that again. We do meet on the 24th. That would be tight. But there is that opportunity on the 24th. I think a number of us have received comments from the public. Many of them have been individually and not necessarily to address to all of us, but yes. Carrie?
Well, I agree with Jane, and maybe it's the Select Board's role to give some direction to the Personnel Board, because it seems that they have two options now, if I'm understanding correctly. One is to go forward with their original article, the way it appears in the warrant, maybe with some very slight changes, or to withdraw the article and come back another time. And so if that, if those are their two options, I really agree with Jane. I just don't think that the article in the warrant is ready for primetime, as I'll put it. It's just, or cart before the horse, or whatever you want to call it. I don't feel comfortable supporting it at this time. And if a majority of us feels that way, then we ought to tell the Personnel Board now and maybe save them the trouble of trying to have a meeting when they can't even get a quorum and all this pressure and everything. But if our board is split and we want to hear back from them, that's a different matter. So right now, I haven't heard anything yet why I would support the article the way it is in the warrant, because I just don't feel it's ready. So I think we should see how we all feel and see if we're split as a board or if we have agreement here.
Any other comments or questions, not considering this right now? All right, Susan?
Yeah, I'm the liaison to the Personnel Board, and I've observed how much discussion and that this has taken up in the past year. And I think that I support the article, but I would not, I would yield, I want to hear what Matt and Linda have to say about it as well.
I don't think anything, you know, in the recent discussions kind of changed the views that I expressed before, which was, it struck me that, you know, last time, last year, you know, when this was withdrawn, there was the idea that, you know, the committee would look at and propose something new and that, you know, they came back with the same article this year, and I felt like there wasn't much progress made. And that what I hope is to see some, you know, real substantive process in a Personnel Bylaw, you know, that would reflect best practices that, and so the current article, the revisions and so forth, that, you know, that should be kind of rolled out of hand because they can't be in the scope of the article. But even the ones that could be made within the scope wouldn't really change the game here. And so I think that really what I'd hope is to redouble the effort over this next year to come back with something that is compelling. And I was especially, you know, felt like we do have that other year because you can retroactively approve the classification actions. So, you know, I don't see that as a big risk to our ability to hire as an organization. It's really more the, trying to get a better structure in place longer term that is of concern.
Can I clarify something, Linda, on that point? I just want to clarify something.
Yes, Stephen? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the article, the article was pulled, if you will, last year because it was non-essential for last year's town meeting. I think, I don't recall us getting specific feedback that the Personnel Board said was going to cause them to review, to reconsider what they were looking at. I think there was feedback, but it was not really specifically related to the wording of the article. We had much more focused in, you know, discussions in the interim, and the article language they came up with was what I think the Personnel Board believed in. But it was pulled last year because it was non-essential and, you know, because of the reduced town media, the reduced warrants, not because of a content-based thing. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay.
Well, there was substantial feedback at the public hearing last year as well as this year.
But not related to the language in the article?
Well, I mean, to the whole concept, yeah. I mean, that's still there, I think, is an issue, is what I've gotten at, I guess. I mean, and the revisions that were made here now after the public hearing were in part to try to address that, but they're, you know, too late at this point. And I think they also reflect that it was rather hurried changes. So I think, you know, they, I thought the letter we got this week that's included in the packet was quite compelling in terms of an evaluation of the quality of those changes.
So any other comments, and then I'll comment. I guess I would say that I would have difficulty also supporting this article at this time. I think that this and this, I respect all the hard work that this committee has gone through, and longevity of discussion is, you know, of some merit, but not sufficient in terms of substance for me. I would say that this is a good example, this whole process is a good example of a committee that is appointed by the Select Board that wants to review their charge and does not come before the Select Board, much earlier in the process, in discussion, which might have prevented where we are at this point in the process. So at this point, I would have difficulty supporting this in its current form. So I, and I also appreciate the committee, given all the machinations that have happened here, deserve some sense of direction at this point, in terms of where the Select Board is coming from. So having expressed our comments, this still does not foreclose the opportunity for the committee to take this feedback and decide how they want to proceed. Are people on the Select Board comfortable with that?
Yes.
Jane, Matt?
Yeah, I think that's the right approach.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We will come back to this discussion. All right. And thank you for Personnel Committee and Resource Director for being here this evening. Thank you. I think the next item is with the review, the 2021 bond sale, and Carrie... And Carrie LaFleur, I believe, is here to walk us through this.
I am here. Good afternoon.
Carrie, thank you so much for your patience while we dealt with all these other items. And I hope you were already on board when we also congratulated everyone on the recent Moody's.
I was. I did hear that. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Carrie LaFleur. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here to present to you with the results of our 2021 general obligation bond issue. Last two, last, actually, last Wednesday, we took bids on $7,755,000 worth of new money, a 10-year bond, and we also took bids on a $1,205,000 general obligation refunding issue. We received 11 bids, which really was phenomenal. And we always rank our bids in terms of lowest true interest cost. So we take, we take into account the premium that is issued for the bonds when we adjust for a true interest cost. So the winning bid or the best bid that we received was from JP Morgan Securities LLC. The original bid provided a true interest cost of 0.681177%, which included a premium of $1,672,581.60, which is just, it really is amazing how competitive our issue was. So the 11 bids that we received are summarized in the information that was provided in the packet. And I'll just mention how tight the bidding was. The spread from the best bid to the least desirable bid was just over 11 basis points. So it was extremely competitive. So as is allowed in the authorization that we received from town meeting, we're able to resize the bond based on the premium. So we are, we end up being able to reduce the total amount that we have to borrow, which is, which is certainly of benefit to the community. So the resized bond issue is 7.68 million, down from 7.755 million. And the resized premium was $1,482,388.60. So in addition to resizing the issue or using the premium to resize, we also use that to pay the issuance costs. So there's no issuance costs to the town as a result of the, this particular issue. And then we had a small amount that was remaining after we took into account the resize, paying all of the issuance costs. And that this is just because of the denomination of the bonds. They're issued in $5,000 denominations. So there was a remainder that we will take in. So after resizing, we had to readjust or restate the true, the true interest cost, and it ends up being 0.692%. There is a list of all of the projects that will be funded through these bond proceeds, including two items at the library, the energy efficient systems. The town is making a contribution to what the corporation will pay to make sure that we get the most energy efficient HVAC system in the expanded area. Then we're also paying for some furniture fixtures and equipment. We're using proceeds to fund parking lot improvements at Harvey Wheeler, building maintenance and improvements, both in municipal buildings and school buildings, the electric bus infrastructure, improvements both at Emerson Playground and at White Pond. We are replacing ambulance two, and we have included full cost of our 2020 annual roads program. In addition, we have some enterprise fund projects. We have a small amount for the treatment plant, water treatment plant, and the Nagog Water Intake, a small amount also for telecommunications. And then the refunding issue includes water system improvements approved by town meeting in 2010, and some smart grid improvements approved by town meeting in 2009. And so for the refunding, I mentioned, there's five years left on this, so we're not extending the repayment schedule. We're just taking advantage of better interest rates. The refunding issue came in almost exactly as we had predicted. We had predicted or projected that the savings would be about 92,000, and it came in at $93,890. So over the remaining life of the, of these refunded bonds, that's a savings to the median household of $13.06. We also like to see how we compare against other issues of either similar credit ratings or similar size. And unfortunately, last week, there really wasn't anything to compare to. But we can compare to how we did a year ago and our issue a year ago, which was about the same size. I believe it might have been a little bit smaller. That true interest cost was 0.848%. So this is the third year in a row I've come with better results, each time thinking they can't possibly get better. But they do, and that's great for the town of Concord. So as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, Moody's, our credit rating agency, did reaffirm our AAA bond rating, which we were very pleased with. There had been discussion at the finance committee level, perhaps, perhaps at your meetings as well. How would the rating agency review our reduced free cash position? And because, because all of our other factors are so strong, there was no negative impact on our credit rating as a result of using free cash, either to create stabilization fund, a stabilization fund, or for affordable housing initiatives, or to reduce the tax rate. So that, that was good to have that reaffirmed. So on behalf of the town, I did accept the best bid again to JP Morgan Securities last week, and I'm presenting it to you this evening for your approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Carrie?
I just want to commend Carrie and her entire team for such an excellent job, and congratulations again on the AAA bond rating.
Thank you. Seeing, Matt?
Yeah, just, so these were capital expenses that the town has recently authored, and that has previously bonded that we're refinancing in part, and then others that we haven't, but now we are financing. Is that the case?
It is. So the largest portion of this issue is new money.
New money, that we were planning to borrow for.
That's, that's correct. And then we also had an opportunity, we had a call provision in this 2010 issue. And so anytime we have a call provision and we think that the market is favorable, we'll just put that out and look to see if we can do better.
Okay. And then these bonds, we're having a coupon rate of, I don't know why I'm getting feedback, but there's a coupon rate of 5%, which looks real high. But then because the premium is just so extraordinarily high, it's sort of like you get a loan and then, you know, if you're putting it in consumer terms, it's not just that the, the bank is paying the closing costs. They're paying you like a huge cash out refinance effectively. And, and you can use that cash towards the payments. So then the net interest is really low, even though the coupon rate is really high, 5%.
Correct.
Okay, just trying to put it in consumer terms. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Well, one other was that it looks like the transaction costs were like over 1% of the total cost. Is that typical? I mean, that those transaction costs would be, you know, almost $100,000?
You know, some, that, that amount is pretty typical because we're typically issuing in, in this range, this size. So there are some costs that are dependent upon the size of the issue. And then there are some costs that are, that are just standard. So, so for instance, our legal costs don't matter.
Yeah.
It don't vary typically, but the cost, the cost to us for our financial advisor is dependent upon the size of the issue. But I think because we're typically issuing in this $5 to $10 million range, our costs are typically going to be around $100,000.
Yeah. I mean, in spite of the fantastic deal, that is a pretty significant transaction cost for doing a deal. It's, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund the town's $8,750,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2011 bonds dated May 17, 2011, maturing on May 15 in the years 2022 through 2026, inclusive parentheses, the refund bonds in parentheses, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal, redemption premium, and interest on the refunded bonds and costs of issuance of the refunded bonds. Move that the sale of the $7,680,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2021 bonds of the town dated May 20, 2021, the bonds, to JP Morgan LLC at the price of $9,146,732.09, and accrued interest is thereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on February 15 of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Year 2022, amount $1 million, interest rate 5%. 2023, amount $965,000, interest rate 5%. 2024, amount $975,000, interest rate 5%. 2025, $990,000, interest rate 5%. 2026, $1,500,000, interest rate 5%. 2027, $535,000, interest rate 5%. 2028, $545,000, interest rate 5%. 2029, $540,000, interest rate 5%. 2030, $555,000, interest rate 5%. 2031, $570,000, interest rate 5%. Move, then in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 4, 2021, and a final official statement dated May 12, 2021, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Move to authorize the execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated May 20, 2021, between the town and the U.S. Bank National Association as refunding escrow agent. Move that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with the SEC Rule 1562-12, in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertakings shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. Move that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Move that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote.
Do I hear?
I second.
Job well done, Susan. That's quite a mouthful. And I hear a second. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Thank you, Carrie, for all of this.
Thank you.
So the next is there are no committee nominations, so committee appointments.
Move to approve Chief Financial Officer Carrie LaFleur to the retirement board for a term to begin on June 1, 2021, set to expire on April 30, 2024.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. We're ready for liaison reports. Would like to, Susan?
Sure. I'll jump back in here. I attended, as we already discussed, the Planning Board public hearing on the 13th. And as I said before, all of the articles presented were very clearly stated and understandable, and there was not a lot of, there was no negative and very little comment in addition to what was presented. The Board of Assessors met on May 13. They need another member. And they did vote to release the overlay release for the funds which would come into play if Article 19 was passed. They also discussed the Audubon Society land on Balls Hill Road and the fact that the, the buildings need to be occupied for tax exempt status for the buildings. However, there's a two-year grace period that the buyer is allowed, you know, this applies to other similar circumstances, to come up with a plan and execute it, to have some use for those two buildings. Okay, that was that. The Personnel Board, we've heard a lot about that, including the draft amendment. And I, I attended, this was so interesting, on the 12th, MMA had a Code of Conduct, a conference on Code of Conduct. And the hosts or the speakers were Regina Ryan, who's an attorney, and Bud Dunham, who's the Sandwich Town Manager. And they talked about how to deal with bullying behavior, either on the part of appointed elected officials towards staff, or on the part of citizens towards, towards staff or appointed and elected officials, and that it's important to have a code of conduct, which which could be included in the booklet that the town clerk issues to every appointee. They advise also that labor council should, should be involved if these situations arise. They mentioned that the rise in public records request is quote off the charts. And caution that anything, any of us communicate electronically or in, in any other fashion is, is public and can be requested or the documentation can be requested. They talked about individual select board members going directly to staff and that the town manager is the liaison, as we know, between the select board and town staff. And that elected or appointed officials have no authority over town staff. They also mentioned that there's been a big increase on mental health issues with members of the public and that in extreme cases, and no trespass order can be issued, but typically that doesn't happen. And that there's, there is something called de-escalating training, which may be helpful in some cases. So they did note that it was the most well-attended MMA forum that they've had this year. So it hopefully will be, you can view it as MMA, but I'm not certain about that. But it was very useful. And that's the end.
Susan, before you move on, two things. When you said that, that the, any, the member, that select board members should know that any of their communications are public records, you mean that from the standpoint of any communication as a select board member? Not as a?
Not as, yeah, not as Jane Hotchkiss.
Right. I just want to make sure that as people are listening to this select board meeting, they understand that this doesn't become a deterrent to running for office because I think it's really important.
Yeah, yeah.
Not fear of being a select board member, but just simply respect open meeting law and the, the process. And then the other question I had for you was in terms of, you know what? I think I just completely forgot what I was going to ask you. Never mind.
Yeah, okay. They did, it was interesting to listen to this because I realized that our board has what I consider very good working relationships with each other and recognition that we're all, our goal is what's best for the town. And I'm glad we haven't had to personally deal with a lot of these things. So, but it was good information.
Thank you, Susan. Who would like to go next? Carrie?
I too attended that MMA seminar and also the public hearings. A lot of good suggestions. I do like the idea of including a code of conduct with the booklet that the town clerk gives out to all new committees. And I think we should talk about that in the future. I attended the CMLP meeting and thank you, Matt and Jane, for reminding me that Article thirty-one, I guess it's not so much there was controversy, but the controversial or debate point was about affordable housing. And that came up at the CMLP meeting. And I understand there could be an amendment to Article thirty-one to remove the exemption for affordable housing. Anyway, the CMLP, after much discussion, supported Article thirty-one the way it is. But they would prefer to, even better if this amendment were to come to, because affordable housing, our newest project was all electric and it turned out to be cheaper anyway. So we'd rather be seen as a good example than an obstacle. Article forty-one, the petition article about the broadband, received quite a lot of discussion at the CMLP. And please, the CMLP decided to defer their vote until their next meeting, which is June ninth. I was hoping their vote could kind of help inform others, including us. But the petitioner said at that meeting that she might be making some changes to that article, including making the select board the appointed authority. There was also discussion that the total cost estimate for getting broadband to all businesses and customers is on the order of ten to twelve million. And that the five percent of streets mentioned actually involves about twenty percent or more of the residential customers, as well as many businesses. So there's a lot to think about with that article. I'm sure there'll be lively discussion at town meeting. I attended part of the school committee meeting. And Dr. Hunter introduced Dr. Andrew Nyameke. I hope I have that right. He is their new Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. An excellent presentation. Also, as I said before, I think Susan mentioned, maybe right before the meeting started, West Concord is having an event in the business district on the nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second. And in particular, several Concord farmers are featured in a farm mural that's going to be installed on the side of Salt Box Kitchen. The mural's made of hundreds of handmade tiles. Each tile was made by a different citizen in Concord. I actually made one of the tiles and it's quite a process. It took a couple hours. So this mural will have an unveiling ceremony, kind of a brief ceremony, on Thursday, May twentieth at one P.M. And all are invited. And then I attended the CPW meeting. There was a water and sewer rate hearing. Water rates are in three steps, as you know, to encourage conservation. And this year, the water rates are going to be going up ten percent, which is quite a large number. They haven't gone up in a while. But we do have to cover some operating and capital costs like PFAS treatment and NAGO infrastructure. And after this, the increases will be on the order of, I think you said, three to five percent in the next few years. And a reminder to water your lawns only one day a week or one inch per week. And they elected a new chairman for next year. Jeff Fasser will be chairman and Dave DeLong will be vice chair. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Carrie? Who would like to go next?
I have just a brief update, which is about the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee, which is moving ahead with its Memorial Day commemoration, which will have a nine o'clock ceremony in West Concord, starting at the Rideout Park and then proceeding to Kennedy Dunn Square. And it will involve the veterans, the Concord Police Honor Guard, the Concord Independent Battery and the Concord Minutemen. And along with the other town of Concord veterans. And then at eleven o'clock in Concord Center, there will be continued commemorations with a gathering of those same groups and on the Monument Square Green, where commemorative wreaths will be placed at the various monuments. And then the Concord Independent Battery is going to fire several times throughout the morning. But just to note that, you know, we're not suggesting that the public come out in force for these. These commemorations are primarily for the veterans themselves. And so it's just the concern about crowds above two hundred and fifty at this stage. It's still the limit and, you know, in spite of other COVID restrictions being relaxed, that's still the upper limit that we have. So that's where that stands. And the committee's going to be making final preparations at a subsequent meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Jane?
I have no committee meetings to report on. I unfortunately had to miss the Transportation Advisory Committee as I had a work conflict. And I know that there was some, we received some commentary or miscellaneous correspondence on that, so I will have to catch up on that. Matt, I wanted to just inquire because traditionally the select board has walked alongside the veterans in both West Concord and in Concord Center and sat and stood on a dais in Concord Center for the presentations of the wreaths and the naming ceremonies, et cetera. It would sound to me like that behavior would not be modeling what we're perhaps asking Concord residents to do. What, what was the plan there?
Yeah, so while the select board members weren't explicitly excluded, they were not invited either. So, yeah, I think that the spirit of it would be that, yeah, it's really specifically for those groups.
Thank you. And all of my meetings I attended have been reported on by one person or another. So that report is short. There is correspondence in the packet from members of the public. At this time, I would entertain public comment. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you, everyone, for a good meeting. Thank you.
Bye.